Bienvenidos, estamos muy contentos de tenerlos aquí en esta noche de libertad. La llamamos oportunidad para que nos reunamos y hagamos una conversación con algunos buenos amigos que están aquí esta noche. Antes de invitarlos, me gustaría reconocer y agradecer. Es bueno ver a nuestro jefe en la casa esta noche, Victor, muchas gracias por estar aquí, señor. Lo aprecio, el trabajo que están haciendo en la comunidad. También Steve Knoblock, un miembro del consejo, gracias a ambos de ustedes y a lo que están haciendo. Sí, los aprecio. Esta vez, si pudieramos tener a algunos de los candidatos, ven, ven, chicos. Vamos a invitar a estas damas, ven. Vamos, ven. Ahí vamos. Bien, excelente. Bien, nuevamente, gracias damas por estar aquí esta noche, es una bendición. Sé que están ocupadas, sé que tienen mucho que hacer, pero estamos muy contentos de que estén aquí. Y tengo algunas preguntas que han sido preparadas, y principalmente para que aquellos en nuestra comunidad puedan escuchar sobre quiénes eres, de qué estás corriendo, por qué lo haces, y realmente para presentarte a nosotros esta noche. Y quiero empezar, voy a ir por la fila, voy a empezar aquí. ¿Podrían presentarse, qué área están corriendo para el Consejo escolar? Y luego, también, antes de hacer eso, voy a pedirle a mi amigo John que venga aquí. John, el pastor John de Zion Church va a venir y rezar. Gracias por ese recordatorio. Solo agarra un micrófono, de cualquier manera. Este es nuestro tipo, ven, gracias, John.
Esto es genial, ¿podemos honrar y agradecer al pastor John Randall y Calvary Southersfield por hospedar esta noche increíble? Gracias por su coraje, gracias por su voluntad. Comencemos con una palabra de oración, Señor, te agradecemos mucho que poseas el futuro. Señor Jesús, el futuro es tu territorio. Y siempre que se siente como si estuviéramos enfrentando tiempos de confusión o miedo, no tenemos que temer porque posees el futuro en tus manos. Jesús, te agradecemos por la salvación, te agradecemos que quien el sol libera es libre en realidad. Te agradecemos por la noche de libertad, donde primero nos podemos celebrar nuestra libertad en ti, nuestra libertad en Cristo. Y Señor, te agradecemos por la verdad, dijiste que eres el camino, la verdad y la vida. Gracias por revelar tu verdad a nosotros, y Señor, pido que te bendiga toda esta conversación. Revela tu auténtico, revela tu verdad, sabemos que creaste familia y te importan las generaciones, eres un dios generacional, y no nos has dejado solo. Así que por tu poder y la poder de tu presencia, reunidnos con nosotros esta noche, llenemos nuestra conversación y que tengas la gloria, el honor y el poder que mereces, en nombre de Jesús, amén.
Gracias, pastor John, los aprecio. Bueno, comencemos aquí, cuéntenos quiénes eres y qué área están corriendo para el Consejo escolar. Y luego, diría una pregunta de seguimiento para todos ustedes, damas, es, ¿qué te impulsó a desear correr? ¿Qué te llevó a esta carrera para empezar? Así que comenzaremos aquí.
Gracias, mi nombre es Lisa Zollinger y vivo en Ladera Ranch, así que estoy en la zona 2. Así que tengo Ladera Ranch, Rancho Mission Viejo, Cota de Casa, Wagon Wheel, un poco de Dove Canyon, una pequeña parte de San Juan Capistrano, justo por la escuela de San Juan Hills. Y ni siquiera puedo creer que estoy sentada aquí ahora mismo porque nunca en un millón de años pensé que estaría involucrada en algo político. Pero me preguntaron si consideraría correr en en enero, y lo llevé a mi esposo. Primero, rió de la idea, y la llevé a mi esposo y su respuesta fue, ¿por qué alguien correría para el Consejo escolar? ¿Estás diciendo que vas a arriesgar nuestra reputación, nuestro negocio, todo lo que tenemos y no vas a recibir pago? Dije, sí, eso es lo que estoy diciendo, eso es realmente lo que estoy diciendo. Así que de todos modos, es una historia larga, voy a hacerla muy breve, voy a decirles esto. Nos llegamos al punto en que seguimos recibiendo un golpe, y finalmente nos dimos cuenta que esto podría ser algo mucho mayor que nosotros mismos. Nadie haría esto si no fueran preguntados por Dios para hacerlo. Así que necesitamos reunirnos en oración y tomar esta decisión. Así que pasamos, diría que probablemente fueron seis semanas de simplemente rezar y rezar y rezar sobre esto. Y al final se hizo claro, muchas puertas se abrieron, cosas que no esperábamos, y aquí estoy.
Estamos contentos de estar aquí, es genial.
Yo soy Lisa Davis, actualmente sirvo en el Consejo escolar, he estado en el Consejo por cuatro años. Y cuando pensé primero en correr...
Sí, ven. Gracias.
Cuando pensé primero en correr, fue marzo de 2020, y me encontré con un equipo y nos acercamos al plan de juego y descubrimos cómo se vería esto, y estaba en la misma situación. Me preguntaron por un número de personas un número de diferentes veces, y finalmente me encontré con el grupo y dije, estas son todas las cosas que alguien podría necesitar que correría para el Consejo escolar. Tengo todos ellos y estoy fuera. Así que, rápido, me encontré y comenzamos ese proceso, y el mundo cerró. Nos encontramos el jueves y el mundo cerró el martes. Así que nadie preocupaba al Consejo escolar, nadie preocupaba por nada excepto recuperar a sus hijos en la escuela. Así que me lo puse en la mesa y pasé a agosto, el primer viernes de agosto. Es el último día en que puedes declarar tu candidatura. Y en ese momento, en realidad, ni siquiera sabía lo que significaba, lo que era declarar tu candidatura. Y había llamado a un amigo, fueron las seis de la mañana, estoy moviéndome ese día. Seis de la mañana, me siento tan orgullosa de mí misma porque la casa está llena, todo está listo. Estoy empacando las últimas cosas en la cocina y estoy estudiando escrituras y me recuerda que necesitamos levantarnos y hacer cosas en nuestra comunidad, y ser valientes y ser valientes y poner todo el armor de Dios. Y estaba como, sí, absolutamente, probablemente debería visitar esa cosa del Consejo escolar. Así que llamé a un amigo y ella descubrió que necesitaba estar en Santa Ana a las tres treinta y diez ese tarde. Así que hablé con mi esposo y dijo, no hay chance, no hay manera de que lo hagas. No necesitas hacer eso, nuestra vida es buena, puedes servir de muchas formas, te ayuda en muchas formas en nuestra comunidad y puedes involucrarte más y así fue desde ahí. Y en realidad, me senté a mis rodillas y hablé con mi Padre Santo y le pregunté. Y él, en términos inciertos, ya me había dicho que esto es lo que necesitaba hacer. Y tres veces dijo el word, canté todo en canciones, todo en mi vida va con una canción. Y hay una canción que sé muy bien, y es porque has recibido mucho, debes dar. Y Dios me respondió tres veces, porque has recibido mucho, debes dar. Y estaba en Santa Ana ese tarde, y llené mi candidatura. Llegué al centro y estaba revisando todo, hay bastante trabajo de papel y estoy buscando lo que necesito hacer a lo largo de las líneas. Quiero decir, te prometo que la gente pasa seis meses o más preparándose para ese discurso, excepto no yo. Así que lo llené y le pregunté cuándo podía revisarlo, si lo devolvería en una semana o así. ¿Cuándo podré revisar mi discurso? Y él dijo, oh, no, ma'am, esto es exactamente lo que estará en el libro de votantes. Y estaba como, oh, Dios mío, déjame tenerlo de vuelta. Así que fui y lo revisé de nuevo un poco más. Pero sé que me pidieron servir en el Consejo escolar, sé que Dios me pidió. Y lo único que puedo decir no es a cualquiera más, no puedo decir no a Dios. Así que estoy en el Consejo escolar porque Dios me pidió, y tendré mi Maker en algún momento y podré decir que he hecho lo que me has pedido que haga durante todo. Mi esposo es un ex marino, tengo cuatro hijos hermosos, tres de nuestros hijos graduaron de la escuela de San Clemente. Amamos esta ciudad, amamos a nuestros maestros, amamos nuestra comunidad, amamos nuestro distrito escolar. Es un buen distrito escolar, vale la pena luchar por él.
Es genial.
Y hago eso, y me levanto para las familias, y me levanto para los niños, y me levanto por lo que creo que es correcto. Y soy muy calculada y paso cantidades de tiempo en nuestras agendas del Consejo escolar, que son casi tan gruesas como un calefacción cada mes. Y reviso y hablo con los maestros y hablo con las familias y hablo con los miembros de la comunidad. Y me levanto para las familias, los maestros y nuestros hijos.
Sí, muchas gracias, Lisa, lo aprecio.
Bueno, ¿puedo decir primero, me gustaría que esta casa honore a Lisa Davis? Porque ella ha servido sin miedo durante los últimos cuatro años, casi completamente por sí misma. Solo quiero honrarla, Lisa, eres un guerrero. Ha tomado muchos arcos por el Señor y por los niños, así que te honramos, Lisa. Así que soy Jennifer Adnamms, estoy corriendo en la zona 1, que es toda Dana Point, todo Capo Beach, un poco de San Juan Capistrano y un poco de San Clemente, y podemos explicar todo eso a ustedes más tarde. Sí, así que mi esposo, he estado en educación durante más de treinta años. He enseñado en escuelas públicas, escuelas privadas, escuelas de charter, escuelas de hogares, he hecho todo. Tengo el completo gamado de experiencia. Mi esposo ha sido maestro de matemáticas en la Universidad de Capo casi treinta años. Y diría, quiero decir, hemos visto la lentitud de la infiltración de las escuelas, pero realmente fue alrededor de 2020 cuando todo se desgarró, ¿verdad? Y comenzamos como, había un momento en el que Craig estaba mirando a perder su trabajo si no cumplía con las vacunas y con estas cosas. Y así, en ese proceso, en realidad nos encontramos con Lisa Davis y nos fuimos a hacer amigos con ella. Ella comunicó mucho con Craig sobre matemáticas y cosas diferentes. Y luego, en octubre pasado, participamos en una reunión del Consejo donde Lisa Davis presentó una política de notificación parental muy común, simple, que básicamente decía, lo que sea que suceda en la escuela con tu hijo, te notará. Suena como, ¿por qué tendríamos que tener una política para eso?, pero esa fue la política. Y Craig y yo nos sentamos allí y miramos, y miramos como los niños rocos estaban manipulados y alterados y alineados y daban scripts. Y los padres no se permitían compartir y todo esto, estaba loco, cosas sucediendo. Y miramos a cinco miembros del Consejo votar eso. Y yo solo estaba allí y estaba como, Señor, necesita ayuda. Como, ella no puede ganar nada, como, necesita ayuda, y él dice, sí, ¿y tú? Y yo dije, oh, Dios mío. Así que fui a casa también, así que fueron preguntados, yo no fue preguntado por nadie excepto por el Señor. Así que fui a casa y Craig y yo comenzamos a rezar sobre eso, y él estaba como, okay, bueno, rezaremos sobre eso. Sí, simplemente rezamos sobre eso. Así que luego pensé, bueno, voy a comer con Lisa Davis y solo ver qué está involucrado. Quiero decir, sabes, un almuerzo, no es comprometido, puedo comer con ella, averiguar qué está involucrado. Porque Craig y yo hemos estado en educación y sabemos, como, sabemos qué viene en contra de las personas que tienen valores conservadores y quieren correr para el Consejo escolar, sabemos. Así que nos sentamos para comer y dije, así que Lisa, ¿qué está involucrado? Como, ¿cuál sería el sentido de correr para el Consejo escolar? Y ella dice, ¿dónde vive? Y le digo mi dirección, digo, bueno, creo que estoy en la zona 6, pero no estoy muy segura. Y ella dice, dame tu dirección. Así que ella me da su dirección, encuentra que estoy en la zona 1. Y la zona 1 es una silla muy importante que necesita ser翻转, lo voy a decir de esa manera. Así que ella me miró, ella dijo, estás en la zona 1, tienes que correr, tienes que correr, es un sí, como, estamos haciendo...
Fui más gracioso que eso.
Okay, eso es como se sintió.
Así que sí, ella te llevó adelante, te inspiró, te movió en esa dirección, y eso es lo que te llevó a esa dirección. Y aquí, por favor, presentense, dónde están, qué área tienen y qué te impulsó a correr.
Bien, yo soy Sonia Turwisky, estoy en la zona 5, así que esa es Elisa Viejo. La forma en que describo esa ciudad para todos ustedes que vengan de San Clemente, es Elisa Viejo es la única que toca todas las lagunas. Laguna Beach, Niguel, montes, bosques, estamos allí, es una ciudad hermosa. Nos mudamos a Elisa hace unos seis años. Sabes, en comparación con algunas de las otras historias aquí, pienso en proceso, en meses. Así que la primera vez que alguna vez miré el Consejo escolar, no corriendo mucho, pero solo sabía qué estaba pasando. Fue a través de la academia, cuando vi que el Consejo dictó o votó para bajar los estándares académicos, estaba molesto. Hablaba con mi esposo sobre eso, como, ¿qué quieres decir, están bajando los estándares? Quiero decir, quieren financiar, pero ahora, ¿por qué estamos bajando los estándares? Mantiene en cuenta, por cierto, crecí en India los primeros doce años de mi vida, ¿de acuerdo? Así que hablo varios idiomas, y algunos de ustedes podrían decir, wow, eso es genial, pero no es así. Como, todo el mundo habla varios idiomas fuera de donde estamos. Curriculum, academia, como, importa. Y okay, lo dejo, como, bueno, eso es interesante, ¿saben qué? Solo quedaremos en nuestra rama, enseñaré matemáticas a mi hija de la forma en que sé. Lo resolveremos y seguiremos. Algunos meses pasan y ahora estoy como, okay, Dios, tienes que darme algo que sirva a mi familia y sirve a ti. Pero saben, simplemente lo dejaremos pasar. El siguiente día, mi vecino dice, hey, ¿quieres correr para el Consejo escolar? Y yo digo, bueno, ¿por qué, qué está pasando con el Consejo escolar? Sé lo que hicieron con la academia, y ella dice, no, la notificación parental, ¿sabes qué está pasando con eso? Y leí más allá. Tengo un hijo de seis años, así que ella acabó de empezar el primer grado. Así que si eres padre de niños pequeños, no, confías y esperas que las escuelas van a hacer su parte. No realmente miras todas estas cosas día y noche, a menos que alguien te lo diga, a menos que estés leyendo en las noticias, eso es solo la realidad. Y cuando miré su política de notificación parental, okay, estaba indignada. El trozo final para mí fue el AB 1955, ahora ese es un proyecto estatal, es un problema estatal, seguro. Pero esa conversación, empieza a nivel local. Eso es para mí, y aquellos de ustedes que no saben, básicamente toma un largo detalle del proyecto y una frase es que ustedes como padre no realmente sabrán qué está pasando con los niños. Los maestros tendrán el derecho, los maestros, la escuela tendrán el derecho, tienen el derecho a mantener información de ustedes, y eso es incorrecto. Es simple y simple, quiero decir, nuestros hijos son, son nuestros hijos, mi hijo es mío, no pertenecen al gobierno.
Sí, lo aprecio.
Así que fue, fue tan fácil, y quiero decir, el resto es historia. Y finalmente pude reunirlos todos.
Es maravilloso, sabes, Lisa Zollinger, me gustaría preguntarle, en tu área, ¿qué piensas es la mayor preocupación? Sabes, hablas con los constituyentes, hablas con la gente, ¿qué crees es la mayor preocupación para ti y para la gente que vive alrededor de ti, en tu comunidad?
Sí, bueno, creo que la gente con la que he estado hablando, especialmente en los últimos meses, están frustradas porque no sienten que se oyen o representan en el nivel del Consejo escolar. Hay, ahora he estado en muchas reuniones, he escuchado muchas reuniones que no había estado antes. Y puedes escuchar al público hablando con el Consejo, y aún así están votando sin importar lo que se dijo. Leo, leo, y pienso, oh, esta vez van a tal vez poner un paro en esto y tal vez, sabes, obtener más información. Y no, toman el voto y son como, no, 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 o sí, sí, lo que sea, sabes, y es solo, siento que la gente está frustrada. No se oyen, nuestras comunidades no se representan con los valores de nuestras comunidades. Y otro problema en mi área es que vivo en una zona con muchos niños jóvenes. Sabes, estoy en Ladera, tenemos Rancho Mission Viejo, que fue Ladera Ranch, sabes, hace veinte años cuando me mudé allí. Se siente muy similar, familias muy jóvenes. Somos todos, tengo cinco hijos, mucha gente tiene muchos hijos, y estamos atravesando, y no sabemos qué está pasando. Y como Sonia dijo, confiamos en que el Consejo está haciendo, está representándonos. Y creo que uno de los mayores problemas que la gente tiene es que en realidad saben que hay un problema, pero ni siquiera saben qué es. Saben que están viendo cambios y está identificando eso. Así que eso es yo, siento que estoy educando a la gente sobre qué está pasando. Aquí está lo que se votó, ¿cómo te sientes sobre eso? Si estás de acuerdo con eso, entonces puedes mantener a tu representante, está totalmente bien. Pero si no estás de acuerdo con eso, lo que la mayoría de la gente no está muy feliz con lo que está pasando, que yo, a todos los que hablo, es hora de hacer un cambio.
Okay, bien. Lisa Davis, Lisa, quiero preguntarle, obviamente han estado en el Consejo y, sabes, cuando hablamos de, cuando la gente dice,翻转 Consejo, ¿por qué es tan crítico, qué significa eso,翻转 Consejo? ¿Qué es, qué es la intención detrás de eso? ¿Cuál es el propósito de reunir a estas mujeres juntas? Quiero decir, para ti, ¿por qué harías eso, por qué es necesario en tu opinión? ¿Y qué sería si eso hubiese ocurrido?
Sí, creo que lo que significa翻转 Consejo es alinear los valores de nuestras comunidades con los valores de nuestro Consejo escolar. Y personalmente no creo que estemos alineados con los valores de nuestra comunidad y los valores de nuestro Consejo escolar. Así que necesitamos personas que estén dispuestas a levantar para cosas y sumergirse y descubrir sobre lo que está sucediendo y averiguar las políticas y las ARs que conllevan y cómo las cosas son implementadas. Y creo que eso es lo que necesitamos hacer.
Okay, sí, y también me pregunto, Jennifer, cuando estás en tu área, obviamente estás hablando con muchas personas también. ¿Qué crees es la mayor preocupación en tu opinión con la educación en este momento? ¿Por qué es tan importante que debamos tener esta conversación, hablar de ello? Y porque algunas personas son indiferentes a ello, ¿cuál es la mayor preocupación?
Así que para mí, la mayor preocupación, y yo, muchas personas con las que hablo, mi área, hay demasiadas agendas políticas en el aula. Se ha ido de aprender a leer y escribir y hacer matemáticas y historia y ciencia. Y hemos sido infiltrados con agendas políticas, y viene de Sacramento. Sabes, mientras que estábamos, sabes, digo, mientras estuve dormida, estas leyes fueron通过, ¿verdad? Y no sé sobre ustedes, pero no presto atención, no he prestado atención a cada ley que pasa por nuestra Asamblea estatal. Y poco a poco, se están volviendo, la mayor preocupación es que están tratando de eliminar a los padres de las conversaciones. Recuerdo cuando mi hija tenía doce y de repente no tenía acceso a sus registros médicos. Y estoy como, ¿por qué, qué está pasando? Como, ¿por qué no puedo ver el registro de mi hija? Y fue como, bueno, hay una nueva ley通过 y ella tiene que dar permiso. Estoy como, ella tiene doce, como, okay, y incluso eso, fue realmente, realmente difícil pasar esa pared. Y pensé, wow, como, doce, okay. Y así, poco a poco, estas son las cosas, sabes, otra agenda política es esta idea de que cada ser humano es o el opresor o el opresor. Y eso está en el aula, eso está en las formaciones de maestros. Como, mi esposo y yo hemos pasado por esas formaciones, como, y estoy como, wow, ¿soy un opresor? Como, no creo que haya oprimido a nadie, como, eso es lo que está sucediendo. Así que mi mayor preocupación es que hemos, como dijo Lisa, este es un gran distrito y tenemos maestros increíbles, pero es esta agenda política que se está volviendo, se está volviendo, está quitando tiempo de enseñanza, afecta el currículo. Afecta todo, afecta la formación de maestros, afecta el currículo, afecta el presupuesto, afecta el tiempo de instrucción, afecta todo. Así que eso es, creo que es lo que la mayoría de la gente está preocupada.
Y yo diría, si eres maestro, si estás en educación, y hay muchas personas que participan en esta comunidad que están en educación, déjeme decirles, gracias por lo que hacen, y los aprecio, realmente lo hago. Estamos agradecidos por ustedes. Y si estás de acuerdo con todo lo que se dice aquí, apreciamos tu elección de carrera y sé que probablemente la mayoría de ustedes, como mi esposa cuando era maestra, se fue a la educación porque ama a los niños y quería educar, así que los aprecio y gracias por lo que hacen. Sabes, Sonia, obviamente eres pasionada por correr para el Consejo escolar, y especialmente en relación a los derechos parentales. Sabes, tienes un fondo en servicio público, ¿cómo planificas? Digamos, por ejemplo, te electas al Consejo, ¿cómo vas a traer tu experiencia a eso? ¿Cómo va a afectarte servir en ese Consejo escolar?
Muchas cosas, pero primero, sabes, mi mayor razón, sí, mi fondo está en política pública. No soy maestra, no quiero ser maestra. Es una llamada, es una llamada noble, y Dios no me ha llamado a ser maestra, y está bien. Voy a estar en el Consejo luchando por los padres, por las familias, por los niños. Las cosas que miro, las políticas que miro, todo lo que llega a mi escritorio, a la agenda, lo miraré desde la perspectiva de los padres, desde la perspectiva de la familia. Ese es el número uno. Número dos, transparencia, estar en el lado de las políticas, estar en el lado oficial, hay un proceso. Sabes, la forma en que los elementos llegan a la agenda, eso es importante. Sabes, mi oponente ha sido conocida, ella ha hecho, ella ha hablado de elementos de agenda fuera de esos elementos. Ella ha hablado y en realidad, sabes, tratado de llevar a la gente al Consejo para influir en el resultado de un elemento de agenda. Y la forma en que lo veo, eso es incorrecto. Si eres un dueño, tienes que ser transparente, tienes que, sabes, tienes que, no puedes hablar de lo que sea que estará en la agenda fuera de las reuniones, tiene que suceder de manera orgánica, ese es el proceso político, ese es el proceso democrático. Y esa es la única forma en la que siento que serviríamos a nuestros hijos y a nuestras familias. No hay conversaciones extras, los mensajes de texto o las llamadas telefónicas que no están en los registros. Así que soy muy, yo sería muy transparente en lo que hago, oficialmente, no oficialmente, cosas así. Tiene que ser responsable.
Lo aprecio, esa responsabilidad, proporcionar eso. Lisa Davis, si puedo preguntarle, si, digamos, nuevamente, que los cuatro de ustedes terminen siendo en el Consejo. Estuvieron electos y las personas de tus áreas decidieron votar en favor, ¿qué en realidad podrías hacer? ¿Qué podrías hacer que podría, digamos, esto saliera de la manera que esperas que lo haga? ¿Cómo se vería prácticamente para nosotros como padres, qué podrías hacer en el nivel del Consejo escolar? ¿Qué cambiaría, qué cambiaría de lo que tenemos ahora mismo, qué sería diferente?
Toda una buena pregunta, así que hay un par de cosas. Uno, el Consejo escolar, hay siete dueños y somos el jefe del superintendente. El superintendente toma dirección de los siete dueños y luego maneja y navega y gira el Consejo escolar, o el distrito escolar. Así que lo que podríamos hacer es mirar la política, y la política impulsa todo lo que hacemos. Así que podemos hacer una encuesta, revisarlo, implementarlo y hacer cambios. Así que la forma en que eso sucede, y también podemos involucrar a los miembros de la comunidad. Cuando estaba en el Consejo, había dos cosas que estaban en el docket de inmediato. En diciembre, cuando estaba en mi primera reunión del Consejo, votamos en el plan de proficiencia cultural. Y votaron, pasaron, voté en contra por una larga lista de razones con las que tenía preocupaciones. En ese momento, no tenía el tiempo antes de eso para ayudar a navegar eso y hacer algunos cambios a él. Así que una vez que sucedió, entonces reuní a unos sesenta miembros de la comunidad y trabajamos en las lecciones individuales. Y pasamos y recogí a los maestros y padres y abuelos y jóvenes y padres mayores. Había una amplia gama, así que revisamos cada lección y ayudamos a asegurarse de que correspondieran con todas las necesidades y miraron para que tuviéramos materiales adecuados para la edad. Así que lo que podemos hacer es hacer cambios en la política.
Ahora, cuando dices materiales adecuados para la edad, ¿significa que parte del currículo que salía no era adecuado para la edad? Y he visto, en realidad, personalmente, si no has visto parte del currículo, es más defiliante lo que están poniendo frente a los niños pequeños. Eso es una gran preocupación. Así que ¿estás diciendo que potencialmente podrías cambiar eso, lo que está poniendo frente a esos niños?
Eso es exactamente lo que estoy diciendo, eso es exactamente lo que estoy diciendo. Y reviso a través del lente todo adecuado para la edad, y creo que algunas personas olvidan lo que es ser cinco y lo que es ser seis y lo que es ser un niño de diez años. Y sabiendo que un niño no camina hasta que tiene uno, no hablan hasta que tienen dos, y no, sabes, y leen a esta edad y cada paso, y sabemos que algunas de esas cosas han cambiado durante el COVID, algunas de esas realistas etapas, las ajustaron en nuestra nación, ajustaron las etapas para tener niños que fue más atrasado. ¿Qué? Eso no, eso no cambia de la noche. Así que si no estamos realmente ante lo que está sucediendo, tendremos materiales inapropiados, completamente no adecuados para la edad. En nuestra última reunión del Consejo el miércoles, la encuadralamos, pero era sobre medios visuales. Y la AR que conlleva eso, que es lo que se implementa por el distrito, dijo que podríamos mostrar rating de películas en la escuela media y en la escuela secundaria. No, por un segundo, ¿estare de acuerdo que deberíamos tener un sistema de rating diferente y menor que lo que es el estándar de la industria, que un rating de película necesita ser diecisiete y necesita acompañado por un padre o un guardián? No me abstendré y votaré por algo que no sea adecuado para la edad. Así que piensa en la séptima y cuarta clase, es cuando fue un rating R, era una posibilidad de ser mostrada en el aula. be shown in the classroom. Maybe someone will come back from staff and tell me that, "Oh, it's only going to be an excerpt." Well, I'm sorry, but if it's rated R, find another way to share that material, something that you'd like to share in the classroom, find another way, but not with a rated R movie. There's no reason.
Lisa Zollinger, you know, as you work alongside of these ladies, what would you say up to this point is your biggest obstacle that you're facing right now?
I kind of touched on this a little bit, but it's actually waking people up to see what's happening.
Do you think it's that we just don't know, we don't have the information? I mean, like you were saying earlier, like, there's so many laws coming down with so many numbers, 1955, 7677, voting this one, they're voting this. Like, and these guys are pushing these things. I don't know what number we're on. I just know that it's bad, and there's like 10 bad bills that are coming down. Call your congressman and call him about that in 1972, and '77, and '30, and you're like, "Whoa." How do you stay educated on all this so that you know how to actually fight against it? You'd be on the phone nonstop?
No, for sure. It's overwhelming. And I'll be the first person to admit, I've been sleeping with all of these issues. Not only is there a lot to learn, but it's also a lot of negativity. So I know as a mom, I thought for years, "I can't take on this negative energy. I'm just going to really pray over my kids and really just hope we're going to have conversations about this, and I hope they're protected."
Right.
And it's, listen, I am a believer, and I believe in the power of prayer, but we also have to put forth action, and we have to protect our kids.
Yeah. So that's the obstacle. The obstacle is just waking people up, and I share that. I mean, I stand here, week in and week out, and with the hopes of awakening people to reality. Obviously, the truth of the gospel, who Jesus is, where salvation comes from, that's the main concern for me. But in addition to that, we live in a culture that, you know, we do have to be salt and light, folks. We do have to stand. We do have to make some kind of a difference, and I appreciate you saying that. You know, let me ask, Jennifer, how are you going to be able, obviously, you have all this experience in teaching and education, how are you going to be able to help teachers? What can you do as a board member that will assist teachers in their everyday work? How are you going to help them?
I'm so excited to do that. I actually, I think I said to my husband a couple of weeks ago, I'm like, "I'm not a politician. Like, I don't want to have to do this campaigning thing. Like, I just want to be on the board so I can help education." So I, my experience, I touched on it briefly, but I taught at Multon Elementary School for six years. Yeah, shout out, Chuck. And then, when my children were born, I stayed home with them, and then I worked in their private school tutoring and substitute teaching, and then I homeschooled them for seven years. And then after that, I got hired at a public charter school that oversees homeschooling families. So I've literally, I have experience in all of it. And I was kind of thinking about it the other day, and I'm like, it's not to toot my own horn, this is just the journey that the Lord has had me on, and it just so happens that I have all this experience in all the variety of ways that we can educate our kids. So, yeah, to answer your question, I want to come alongside teachers. We have amazing teachers in this district. My husband is at a great school with a great staff. And I want to come alongside. I actually want to hear from them, because I think a lot of teachers feel overwhelmed, feel like they've been handed things that they're like, "Is this right? Am I supposed to be doing this? I don't know how I feel about this, but it's really being forcefully shared with me that I need to do this." I think there's a lot of us that are kind of like, not sure what to do about that. And so, I can't wait to come alongside teachers and help. I love curriculum, working with the charter school. I know all kinds of curriculum. I know things that work, things that don't work, you know, with lots of different learning styles. So that's what I'm excited to do, is to come alongside teachers, come alongside parents, and let's educate our kids well, even better than they are. They're getting well-educated in terms of academics right now, but let's get rid of the political agendas. Let's get back to excellence, and, yeah, let's empower our teachers instead of burdening them with all this stuff.
That's good. I like that. That's good. Sonia, again, I want to come back to you as it relates to parents, and I wanted to have a follow-up question as it related to parental notification, parental rights, and obviously, it's interesting to me that, in my observation, that there are people that are putting forth policy, A, that don't have children, that want to take away my parental rights. You don't even have kids, but you want to take away my rights as a father? That's not right. Why do you think it is? I'm going to ask you. Why do you think it is that they do that? Why do they want to take away my rights as a parent? Why are they doing that? What's the purpose behind it?
I'm going to say that the parental notification policy, it was, you know, you've had people say that this is a forced outing policy, that, you know, of the people that are for parental notification, they're just forcing out people who are not ready to share about their sexuality or about their transition with their parents. And that is a tough subject, right? We know that it's hard. It's really hard to go there, because, I mean, I feel for you if you are questioning and wondering your sexuality, or whether you're transitioning and you're not ready to tell your parent. I feel that. But the way they're going about it is wrong. They're saying that, well, there's a lot of potential for child abuse. So because there's potential for child abuse, that they're not treated right by their own family, that we shouldn't really tell the parents, the teachers really shouldn't tell the parents. Well, no, that is a child abuse issue. And you know what? I am with you. If anybody is abusing a child, I'm on board. Let's send them to jail. Like, they deserve to be in jail. Child abuse is not okay. So I am not, I'm not saying that at all. So we have to consider that ugly side of it, but you're not taking my child away. If you think I'm a bad parent, come talk to me. We'll talk for hours, and then we'll figure this out. Or if you think that I'm truly abusing the child, then call the CPS. We can call the CPS for parents. Who are we calling on? Bad teachers or bad, I don't know, the school when they're not telling us about our kids? This is Alisa Viejo. I'm representing for Alisa Viejo. That's where I'm running, and I'm going to tell you, Alisa Viejo families are involved families. We care about our children. This is South County. We really do love on our children. And if you, as an educator, as a school, if you think we're not, by all means, call the CPS. Let's get involved, and get your board involved, because we want to, we love kids. And on that note, this right here is a dream team. We need to flip the board, and I'll tell you why. We all have our strengths. It's really cool. We have somebody who, just Lisa Zollinger, right? She's like, "I was not paying attention, but now I fully am." Great. She can be community engagement. You best believe, she's going to be recruiting people to get involved. Lisa Davis, like, she's an incumbent. She just speaks the truth. She gets it done. She's fierce. And then you have Jennifer Adams over here, who's for the teachers. She gets it. She gets the things that teachers go through that I don't understand. And then you have me, who's going to look at things from a parent perspective. I mean, that is an awesome team. We got all our bases covered. So, yeah.
Good. It's great. That's excellent. Thank you for that response. And this does seem to be, and I think if you look at the language in which these laws are written, and I have friends who are involved legally, they go up to Sacramento and seek to stand in the gap for families, and I appreciate what they do. I'm thankful for their voices. I try to listen to what they say and pray for them, and even sometimes, when given the opportunity, go up to Sacramento myself, as I have on more than one occasion, to just be there and to support just another side of the thought of this. But I, it seems to me like it's somewhat of a Trojan horse. They ride it in such a way that it seems like, "Oh, we're really trying to help," but really, we're not trying to help. We're actually, we want control. And it's something that concerns us as parents, and of course, now even as grandparents, and we should be involved with this. This is kind of a touchy one, but we're there, so let's go. I think it's okay to talk about it, and it's something, in a lot of ways, some of us that grew up going to school, we're talking about things that we never talked about. I mean, this wasn't even a thought in most of your minds. If you're my age or older, you didn't really, we're having these conversations, "What is this about? Children become..." I mean, this is totally new territory. So, with that in mind, Lisa Davis, these recent laws from Sacramento involving the LGBTQ and transgender children, how do you address all of this? Because this is a real thing. This is happening in our board. We see it. We just had, you know, these radical board meetings that have happened recently, and obviously, there's a side, and people want to voice their opinion, and, okay, let them do that. But how do you deal with that now as a board collectively? Let's say you're there. How do you take that on? How would you deal with that? It's a major thing.
Yeah, it is a major thing, and it's actually like incredibly important that we look at what's happening, right? When I presented that policy in October, I probably spent more time on that than I did on my dissertation when I was working on my master's. I have a master's in education. I taught for 14 years, and I taught kindergarten through 6th grade, most recently 6th grade math and science. So I know education, and I have four kids, heavily involved in everything that they've ever been involved in, from room mom to team mom to soccer coach when my husband wasn't there, to everything that went along the lines of kids. I actually got in line in heaven to love kids. I love all kids. I actually got in that same line to love all humans. I have friends that are gay. I have friends whose children are trans. I have cousins who are gay, cousins who are trans. I love everyone. Everyone. I would never, ever stand in the way of a child and a parent. And if a child is considering anything, anything, whether it is, I do know that God sends us to earth as a boy or a girl. I know that. I know that. And I do believe that sometimes children and adults have different paths, and their life is different than maybe they might align with how God sent them. I also know that the experts say that no one should consider changing their gender until they are at least 26 years old. The very leading expert on that is a woman, and I'm drawing a blank on her name, but she's a clinical psychologist for 40 years, and she herself is transgender. And what she says is, no one should consider that until they are 26. My jurisdiction is kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, TK, and now primary education is starting at three in California, right? So that is until 18, 12th grade, right? So my jurisdiction is over children. I will fight for children until I lay my head on my pillow and do not open my eyes again, because they are God's children.
Yeah, thank you. And folks, I think that in those meetings, it's okay to have them, and listen, you have the ability to share your opinion, and, okay. But I think sometimes it is, it's one-sided. It is one-sided. When it comes to tolerance, it's defined as you tolerate us, we don't tolerate you, but be tolerant. And that's, it's redefined for us, and that's where we need representatives to kind of say, "Hey, listen, there's another side to this." We have the same, need the same opportunity to have representation that they do, and that seems right, that if somebody else is speaking what our values are, that you should have that same opportunity to be able to represent us. And I believe that that's probably why you're running for that purpose, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your statement. And we do love all people. And we also, there's love, and there's also truth, and we minister in both of those areas. But when it comes to children, I think it's worth fighting for. And listen, I have four kids and two grandsons, and my boys, when they were little, and my daughter, they thought they were going to be a lot of things. They didn't turn, they're not any of those things, you know? And some of it was dangerous, like, "No, you can't, no, no, you can't." But, you know, "No, I definitely am going to be Superman." "All right, you know, just, you know, I just want, just go for it. Jump off the roof. That's fine." No, of course not. They don't know. They're little. They don't understand. They're still being developed. And so, those that would stumble children in that way, Bible has a lot to say about that. That's for another time. Come back on a Sunday. I'd love to share with you about what says about that. You know, a few other things that want to bring to your attention. You know, some questions here. How about this? This is a new one. What about, "Do you support slash oppose allowing students to access restrooms, locker rooms, showers based on gender identity or expression?" Can we please talk about that? Like, what is that about going into these? Would you, would you share with us what your thoughts are on that?
Actually, I would be happy to. I just had a situation just this week where my daughter just started high school, and she's on the tennis team there, had to play a biological boy. And she was sobbing in the car on the way home because...
Did she beat him?
She got, she actually was tied for a while, and then he beat her, but she was so upset because he hit the ball so hard. And she's been playing tennis for six months. So she, and she's like, it hurt, like, when it hit her. You know, like, it was like, this wasn't... So we've had a lot of discussions. Obviously, the Olympics gave us opportunities to discuss this with our children. Listen, I'm with Lisa. I love everybody. I think that some people are going through some things, and I'm going to do, I'm not going to judge. You can do what you want to do, but biological males should be going to the bathroom, in a male bathroom, and the biological girls should be going in a girl's bathroom. And the same goes with sports. I'm, thank you. I realize that you really, really want to change your gender, but you're biologically not that other gender. And I will, I have actually grown a lot in the years, the last 10 years. I will actually call you a she if you would like to, because I just want to respect you. But I will not let you go into the bathroom with my daughters. So, and I will not let you play... I don't want you to play sports with my daughter unless she knows, you know, unless she chooses that. I reminded her, she went to a camp this summer, and she did beat a boy and got a trophy, but the difference is, is that he was ranked on her level, and she knew, like, it was something, she knew going into it. So I feel very sensitive about this. I feel like we cannot, I love that you think you're that gender, but actually, biologically, you're not. So that's...
I agree. Thank you for that. I appreciate that insight, and I agree. I think that women should go into women's bathrooms, and men should go into men's bathrooms. I don't know, that's so obvious, and, you know, so let's just keep it that way. And it's dangerous. We already see some of the things that have happened in recent days as a result of those things being altered, and so I appreciate your insight on that. What do you think are some of the fiduciary priorities for the school district? That maybe, a lot of us maybe were unclear on some of those things. Obviously, you've served on this, maybe others of you know. What are some of the things that should be important to us as parents as it relates to that responsibility of the school board?
So first of all, I think parents need to get back in the classroom. Get back in the classroom.
What does that look like?
That means schedule your day. When I was, I mean, my kids are now 28, 25, 23, and 21. So when my kids were in elementary school, I was in every one of their classes every week. And we need to get back to where we are back in the classroom. And there are some teachers, listen, I understand, things are different now, right? Where people are filming you all the time, you're afraid someone's going to be navigating and thinking, you know, taking something out of context, all of that. I get that. But parents need to be back in the classroom, and you need, as much as you need to go to lunch with a friend, you also need to be in the classroom. And I think we need to encourage everyone to get back in the classroom. When I was a kindergarten teacher, the more hands I had, when I was a 6th grade teacher, the more hands I had in the classroom. I could grab kids and help them one-on-one. I could listen. I could have them read to me. I could go do math facts. I could, whatever, whatever area that you can get in and help in the classroom. Teachers need help. Your kids need to see you there. And grandparents, we've got grandparents, how many of you are grandparents in the room?
Yeah.
Let's go. Get back in the classroom. Get in the classroom. Go in and help. Go in and help, because the more love that they have, the more opportunity they have to be taught and to guide and help is great. So we need to be aware of what's happening. We need to get in the classrooms. When things don't feel right, guess what? They probably aren't. So we have to do our due diligence. We can't, sorry, Lisa Under, we cannot sit back anymore, right? We cannot, not sorry, but yes, we agree. We all need to wake up, right? We need to get back in and we need to stand up for what's right. We need to help and be partners. We need to be back to where it feels like. I feel like we pulled away a little bit from parents, teachers, and child and working together as a team. And it's not us against them, it's an all-together. How can we best support children? I think that's our main thing.
Love it. When you think about, let's say again, that the four of you are, you know, together, you guys get elected and so forth. And we'll talk about the voting maybe in a little bit, we can describe how that works. But what would be, what would be some of your top priorities? And any, either one of, any of you can answer this. What would you say, man, this is, this is what I want to take on right here. This right here is, is my, my concern. This is my top priority. At least it would be one of the top three priorities which I would be involved with. Who wants to go first?
I'll take that.
All right. I'm curious what your other priorities are too, ladies. Feel free after she goes, well, this is my priority. You want to get on this?
Obviously parental notification. I mean, yes, we have this law on the books, AB 1955. But there have been several school boards, brave school board members that have stood up and said, uh-uh.
Can we change that at the school board level? Is that possible to have to, to implement a policy that has parental notification?
We can put forth policies for our district. We can't change Sacramento law. We can't change California law. But what we can do is stand up and say, no. We're, we are pushing back on that. And listen, it can look a lot of different ways. The, the boards that have fought this and what they've done is they've fired superintendents over it or they've passed their own parental notification policies. And those districts are being sued by Sacramento. Those board members are being recalled. So we, we're watching and learning and we realize, okay, we have to be strategic as we fight that. But the first thing you have to do is get the four of us on the board and the other three that are in the seats now off the board so that we have five-two that want to fight this thing. So that's, that would be my first thing. The other thing is something that my husband and I talk about a lot. And this has to do with the political agendas. And part of what's happened with the political agendas trickling down into the classroom is really bad discipline policies. During the Obama administration, I don't know the year, but it was basically decided that discipline and suspension rates are racist. And schools were told you need to artificially lower your suspension rates. So they did. And, and so what's happened is teachers are struggling to implement good behavior and to manage their classrooms because their hands are tied by laws in Sacramento. And it really doesn't help even the child that's acting out. Because, I mean, how many, we're all, how many are parents in here? Like our kids need boundaries. They need to know this is a no. This is, you can do, this is good, this is a no, okay? We have to have that in the classroom, okay? It's not helping kids to let them behave poorly and continue and continue. So that's a real problem.
So how would the board implement that? This is a problem, what is the solution to that? What do you do? Are you able as a board to say, hey, this is what we're passing down from here on out? These are the boundaries that we're setting in the classroom? And this has to be across our district?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can look at policy and then we as a board decide. And we, we change policy, rewrite policy, we fix it. That's what the board can do. And the amazing thing about a school board, I, you know, a lot of times, it's an election year. We're all fired up about who we're going to vote for president or who we're going to vote for Congress. And that's all great and we should be fired up about that. But this is an amazing opportunity to actually see something get done in the classroom. When we pass policy, it has to be implemented in the classroom. Now Sacramento could come after us, but it still has to be implemented for the time being in the classroom. So it's an amazingly powerful thing to be a part of is electing a new majority of the school board. It's powerful.
Yeah, would love to see that. That would be, I mean, just to be able to have some representation. That's exciting. I mean, that's what you guys would want to do. Sonia, what, what do you think, obviously your parental notification? What's, what do you, what do you think is important? What would you want to see happen straight away by you being a part of it?
One of the things I would do, it would be just from my own personal experience and background. So when I, I started seventh grade here in this country. And you know, often when you are from one of the eastern countries or like any country where English is not the main language, right? Where you come into the United States, that language barrier is always there. And you, immigrants like settling into a new country, that in itself is hard. For a good while, between both my parents, in the beginning, they had four jobs. They were eventually able to settle in, just again, my dad was a mathematician. My, so I mean, it was, he was able to settle that in due to academics, side note. But just going to that, they were so busy working. And we can't ignore that reality in public schools. We have a lot of families that don't have time to be involved. They are busy working just so that they can live and send their kids to school. And then there's a language barrier. What I would like to change, what I would like to see change or to see happen would be to whatever, all the things that are going on in school, to break it down, to break the communication down for families. Let's get the Latino families involved. Let's get the Asian families involved. Let's get some of the, you know, the Eastern European migrants that we've had here. Like let's get them involved. And just from the Asian background, from the Indian background, I'll tell you, there's this notion that whatever the school does, whatever the teacher does, we're going to respect that. Because you know, you're taught to respect your elderly, your teachers. So the Asian parents don't get involved. And just out of respect, that's just what they think. If you ask a lot of teachers, they will complain about that. Yes, my Asian families don't get involved. It's not because they don't care. It's one, they don't think that they need to get involved. So let's, let's change the language on that. I do, I want to bring back, like clear that communication up. If there is a way to get more parents involved, it's to address families, like all families in public school.
Love that, thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to answer to it.
Please.
I, I believe in transparency in all the things that the board does. And one of them is curriculum transparency. I think one of the things that I would like to do is make curriculum accessible online. I think that as a parent, you should be... As a parent, you should be able to easily access what your children are being taught. There's some, there's some papers in the district that aren't filed properly with the district. There's some things that have kind of come to the surface that I've seen in this last year that are not very transparent. And it's really, it's really aggravating that idea that the schools don't trust the parents. And I'm not okay with that. We need to be, parents need to be an integral part of education. And we need to know what's being taught. We need to see, we need to see the surveys that our kids are, are asked to, asked to complete. We need to see not just a summary of them. Because sometimes we'll get, as parents, we'll get a little summary. Our school district is actually better than a lot of school districts where we can go down to the district office anytime the district office is open. That's my understanding. And walk in and see curriculum. There's a lot of school districts that don't do that. But we're in a day and age where we should be able to access it at our fingertips. And not, there's a lot of parents that work nine to five. So it's going to be very difficult for you to go in and explore curriculum. So that's one of the things I would want to work on day one. And the second one is Sonia referred to the math curriculum. They took away, they voted, not Lisa, she actually fought to keep it. But they voted to take away accelerated math for sixth graders, which shortened the, how far our kids can get in high school unless they took college courses or took, they, they offer some other classes in the summer, which some people can't do that. Anyway, day one, I would figure out, I would like to start exploring and figure out, how can we reverse that? How can we bring sixth grade accelerated math back into the sixth grade, back into our district?
Well, a couple, just a couple more questions, then we're going to conclude tonight. Because I want to have, give these ladies opportunity to meet you out on the patio afterwards. You have questions for them, if you're in their district, if you're in their area. I know that's why they're here. They'd love to meet you and answer any other questions that you have personally and, and just assist you in any way. But I was thinking as you ladies were talking, just kind of a question that came to mind as it related to children and the heart of a teacher and the desire in education. I suppose it's kind of a deeper question that kind of looks into it. Maybe one of you wants to answer it or a couple of you. But what's your, what's your main purpose as a teacher, as a board member, being involved with education for a child? But what's your, what's your hope? What's your desire for this child that comes through the school system? That goes through, what, what are you hoping is going to come from this? What's, what's your desire for any kid that comes through the Capo Unified School District? What's the hope? What's the goal? What's the vision for the child? I mean sincerely, ultimately, what is the goal?
Rigorous education. We need to get kids, we need to focus on academics. And I also think recess is just as important.
Come on, somebody. Recession. That was my best subject, I'm just saying. MPE, no.
Exactly, exactly. No, it's so important that we move. It's so important that kids move. I mean, there's, oh, I've, yeah. I've done an Ironman. So believe me, I know how important it is to move. That's a lot of moving to get to that spot. Several marathons and 100 mile bike rides and, and then a full Ironman. But I think...
Of course Lisa Davis has done an Ironman.
Well, it's going to have all the children, so that you, are you basically saying you want every child to do an Ironman? Is that we're going to bring them through and that's the goal?
Yes, let's go!
And also be educated.
Well, actually, one of the things that I've been working on right now is to, in middle school especially, but I, I would like to see it happen in middle school and high school, is to look at a child's schedule, particularly children that need to move like me. And they're, for their hardest subject, before they have their hardest subject, this class before that is PE. So that they wake up, they get moving, they get their brain moving, right? When I taught, thank you. When I taught elementary school, oh, believe me, we were moving all day, every day. And sometimes it's like, okay, let's go, let's go run a lap. Let's go play, let's go play kickball, let's go play foursquare. It's really, really important. But rigorous education, so that art, so that kids, and another thing that we're doing right now is real food. Our partnerships with this, anyway, that is a whole nother story. But helping better feed our bodies so that we can move better and think better.
And the board has the opportunity to help implement those policies that will, that's wonderful.
And we need to keep those partnerships and keep increasing those. And we're working with a lot of local growers. And anyway, that's, that's, besides, but rigorous education. We absolutely need to get back to really focusing on that. And we can leave a lot of things for families to work on at home.
Jennifer, you know, same thing for you. Your, your, a child comes through the, the school system, education. What's your hope? What's your dream for this child? What do you want them to come away with? So when they come into that age and they come through the system, they, let's say they start in kindergarten, pre-K, they come all the way up through Capo Unified, they go through high school. What are you hoping for this person when they come through?
Yeah, I agree with Lisa Davis. Rigorous academics, building skills to be a successful, thriving adult. As a Christian, I mean, it's hard for me to separate my answers just out of my love for the Lord and out of my love for people. I want, I want, you know, I want children loved. And I want them to know who they are. And I want them to be secure in their identity. And yeah, and I want them to grow and thrive and be connected to their families, not separated from their families. I want the families to be thriving. I want, I don't want the school and the teachers to get in the way of the parents, but to come alongside the parents. What I've learned in education is it's, you know, student, I think Rebecca Friedrich said this the other night. Student, parent, teacher, it's this triangle. And, and really the teacher is an amazing part. But we're there to help. We're there to assist. We're there to educate where we can and to, it's really about the parent and it's really about the student. And so I, I mean, my heart would just be that every student thrives and flourishes and discovers their true identity. I mean, I, yeah, it's hard for me to separate it from like a public school and my, and my Christian values.
But you don't have to separate it. I mean, other people don't.
Yeah, right? I mean, come on. Yeah, I want the kingdom of God to, to move forward. So that's what I want to...
There's no apologies for that. I appreciate you saying that. And that's good, that's who you are. And that's good for us to know that. I think that's, that's, that's important to us. And I appreciate you being willing to share that. Some people think, well, you can't talk about that because then that'll be like, that's, that's who I am. So that's what we're doing. So thank you for being honest about that. Sonia, you got, you got one of these kids coming through? Same thing, same question for you. What, what's your hope? What's your dream? What's your desire for these children when they come through?
I want them to walk out and go to a different place outside of Southern California and then just be enved in a healthy way. I know we're at a church, but like I want them, I want people to go, oh, you're from Capo. Oh, you're from Orange County. You must be really good at what you do. That's what I want. I want the best for all of our kids. And I'm talking about like every child. I want our kids to do their 100%. And you know what? Like that 100% for every child is different. But as long as we know that the child who is in special needs class gave it their 100%. Child with extra resources, multiple IEPs, gave it their 100%. And the teachers helped them do that, right? And the child in advanced classes got the resources that they need to excel, that they were able to put in their 100%. I think that for me is the most important. I want them to graduate and go, yeah, I loved my school, I made friendships. I still go back and visit teachers. That would be, I mean, that would be ideal. If we can just foster that community. Community is everything, right? I want them to be proud to come back home. I mean, you guys are watching Olympics, right? We have so many people from here. And I just love that when they give shout out to Capo schools. Let's continue that on every level.
That's great. I'll ask you, you're the last one, and then I'm going to wrap it up. Go ahead.
I, I agree with everything that's been said. But I, I will add, one of the things that I'm very hopeful for is that we teach our children how to think and not what to think.
That's great. That's helpful.
I, I think about my own education and I think back to not knowing where my teachers felt, what they, where they stood politically. I had no idea.
Yeah.
I, they loved our country and respected our flag and, and honored it and set a great example for us. They taught us to love our country. And I, I think these are valuable things that are being lost in a lot of the other, in the, we'll call it the weeds that are going on right now. And I'd like to get back to some common sense policies. Like we are, we live in the United States of America. It's incredible.
Yeah.
And I want our kids to know that.
Yeah, that's good. That's great. Man, I appreciate that. Appreciate that. You know, last question, and then we're going to conclude here. Lisa Davis, I'm going to ask you this. Can you share with the folks here tonight? What can, what can, if somebody's interested in what you're doing? Obviously, you're here, so I think you're interested and you're going to be thinking about these girls. But beyond thinking about them, and what can they do to help these ladies actually get on the school board and make a difference that they've talked about tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. So a little by a lot, we get things done. So if everyone in this room could, could commit to help one of us, whoever, whichever area you live in, and you can host a meet and greet, you can make phone calls, you can canvas, which means knock doors and talk to people and share. And we can teach you how to do that. You can donate to our campaign. Campaigns take money to get the word out. And we are very, very careful with every dollar that anyone donates to our campaigns. And there are so many ways that you can get involved. And it's really important that you talk to your neighbors and you talk to your friends because it is incredibly important that we vote all the way down to the end of the ballot, which is school board, right? So that is where it makes the most sense and that is where it will affect your lives the most. And I can speak on our, Mayor Victor Cabral, who is doing an amazing job here in San Clemente. And you should talk to him and learn the things that he's doing to help protect our community here in San Clemente. So it's so important that we are, we vote informed, that we know who we're voting for, we know what they stand for, we know where they'll, where their votes will lie. Because I have not voted on anything of moral value, maybe, that's different than what I believe. I, I never will. I will never vote different than who I am. And I think you need to really talk to candidates to learn where their values are. And I can speak on the fact that the four of us, our values align. And I know that our God is aware of all of us. I know that He knows and loves each and every one of us. I know that He knows and loves each and every one of us. He sent us to earth and He sent us to be strong and be bold and stand up for what's right and do the right thing. And I'm, I'm committed to do that. Judy Bulikas and I are on the board and we align on so many things. And the, and I need some more, I need some more allies that will help guide and connect the values of our community need to align with the values of our board. And I do not believe they, I know they don't. I know they don't at this time. So I'm, my ask is that each of you in this room that align with the values of the four of us, that you find out, meet us at the table and you find out how you can get involved and help us.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for being here.
As we conclude tonight, I am going to invite the husbands of these ladies to come on up and stand behind your wives, would you? Come on up, men. Come on up. I was talking to these guys and I said, hey, man, what do you do when somebody's trashing your wife on social media? I don't look at social media. I wanna go meet and greet. And, yeah, it would be hard. So you need to pray for these guys too, you know? They're, they're supporting.
It's a team effort.
Yeah. It's a commitment of the whole family, really, when you think about it. And, you know, I think it's, it says a lot. And, and I appreciate you guys. And is, and so Pastor John, won't you come back up with me, would you? And we're gonna pray. And can I borrow that mic? And I didn't, I didn't ask beforehand, but I, I don't mind. I'm gonna do it anyway. Steve, would you come out and pray for these folks? Come on.